Can you, will you give me a couple minutes?
Yeah.
No, Ricky's got a new collection.
The cat.
I don't know where she's from.
It's a public leverage.
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
He just, I seen him in the last week.
He can't do anything without, so those are all we got, all these things we did.
It's Friday night, I seen him. So I stopped after work down there and stood his foot.
And we invested in notes and narratives.
I saw like, yeah, only if it's quote, is on record.
Love doing that, huh?
If you use it at closing, there won't be any notes on there, but yeah.
My pee.
Something is.
I don't know.
Oxygen.
Yeah, 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 I'm gonna need that.
Megan, you want me to apply this for my lady or your wife?
Can I call for a second and just say it again?
Just call me today.
I think he tried.
I love to read.
Not today.
How was supposed to?
I'll call tomorrow morning, sorry.
No worries, oh my gosh. He doesn't know.
Well, yeah.
Congratulations.
You waited too long, Ron.
Wow.
Yeah.
Too late now, Ron.
This is late. See? Something you didn't know.
No.
Congrats, Lord.
Thank you.
Yeah, seriously.
That's why I asked about that.
You snooze, you lose.
Yeah.
See? You got, you got, you got a good one, Mr. Steve, saying this.
Do I?
You do.
Forty-seven years.
I'm blessed.
I second that. Let's see.
Forty-seven, that's all.
I got trouble with forty-seven minutes around here.
Me too, forty-seven minutes, I, I cut.
And every Wednesday, right?
Huh?
Yeah, but we are still live, just, just in FYI, we're still live.
Oh, okay.
Oh, really?
Yes. Yeah.
Nobody's will have no real personality, guys. Everyone wants to make an announcement, we're waiting for it.
Nope, Rick, um.
I'm not coming.
Rick's not gonna be here.
Oh, he's not? No, we were waiting for it.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, it's a big plan.
Yeah, no worries.
You're on.
Okay, call us finance and legislation meeting the order, Mr. Balik here, and Mr. Bayes is absent. Um, we got one piece tonight, and we have some things to discuss, let's get the first one out of the way. And this is an ordinance appropriating the sum of one thousand dollars to Youngstown Class B Baseball, Inc. For an outfield advertisement sign for the city of Struthers for the year of twenty twenty-two. Something we do every year, um, made a motion to bring it up. Make a motion to bring it up. Second? I say. That's it for legislation. Uh, does anybody have anything else for finance and legislation this evening?
Are we discussing, I don't know, no, that?
Oh, the sign?
Sign.
I wasn't planning on it, but you need to, something we do every, every year.
No, I just wanted to maybe suggest that we could get an updated sign with our new logo on that, because that sign.
We've talked about that a few times.
Yeah.
Do we generally pay for that, the upgrade on the sign out of our end, or is that? That sign's been there ever since I've been here, so I, I don't remember changing.
I think we've paid enough to get it upgraded.
Over the years?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, so would we just reach out to scene then?
Yeah. So, um.
Which is that?
Maybe hold that until they give us an okay that they would do that.
Okay.
Oh, so then scene would take care of the?
When that comes out, we can just table it, not be incorrect.
About three readings?
But we could probably find, yeah, we'll go to three readings and then.
Yeah, go to three readings, should be probably going to three readings on it, we're going, so.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, no worries on that. Do you want, do you want us to have Megan reach out? That who?
Probably there, we're holding more.
Reach out, yeah, are you able to do that?
Yeah. Since we do have new logo, I mean, it would be nice to have a new sign.
Oh, yeah, that's good thinking.
It's, it's an old sign, too.
Yeah, it's very good. It's been there as long as I've been here, so it's twelve years old at least.
Okay.
Okay, we have obviously some discussion tonight about, uh, limit of pets ordinance. We have not, we don't have anything made at this point, correct?
Not a limit, no.
We went over it a little last week, thoughts?
I gave everyone a copy of, it's called there in Marin County.
Okay.
Um, it touches base on a little bit of everything, I know we probably already have some of this stuff in, in our ordinance, but, um, a lot of people are expressing that a limit isn't going to help justify how we can handle when we go into such, when the officers go into situations with animals, because someone could be mistreating two animals, or it could be ten.
I would agree, I would agree a hundred percent.
And I, I also agree, but I know that there, the cattle law is five or more dogs, and that's state of Ohio, it's not just us. So that's the only limit.
But if it was state of Ohio, then we don't need to make an ordinance on it, theirs supersedes ours.
No.
Correct, but for the abuse part, is what I think Joey wanted us to kind of touch base on?
I, to be honest, we had thought about this quite a few times over the week, and what I don't like doing is basically, we're crafting an ordinance that says you can only have so many dogs, because we're trying to combat how you treat or take care of your dog. The correlation doesn't make that much sense. Whether, you brought up the best point, whether you got two, whether you got ten, you could be mistreating the two just as easily as the ten.
Yeah.
So if we're trying to go after people mistreating dogs, probably target the amount of dogs.
Right.
In my opinion.
Is why I brought this document up is because it doesn't say an amount, it just goes over the mistreatment, and, um, it has like a little bit of licensing in there, um, a couple different things, it has dogs at large citations for that.
I, I'm all for tightening up on the restrictions and things like that, and as far as trying to combat abuse and mistreatment and all of those things, but I don't think targeting a limit.
Right.
Is really gonna do that, and I don't think that we should, basically implementing something that harms everybody if you wanted to have over five for people possibly mistreating those. We're gonna target mistreating, if we're gonna target that stuff, then let's target it.
Yeah.
But as far as going after a number of dogs, I guess I just don't see the relevance to, and the correlation from mistreating them to the amount of them that you have.
If we do anything, I'd like to go over the abuse.
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
Hundred percent.
The living conditions, that, you know, the things that happen.
How many, how many dogs does it take to live in an apartment to become abusive, though? I mean, seriously, I mean, if they have no place.
How much problems do we have with that?
We don't know, how many problems do we have with four of them, you can't tell by the.
Sure. But what's our next, what's our next thing, do we?
I, I think, I think we should put a limit on, on the amount of animals that people can have in their house, I mean, that, that's, if they have one in five, they gotta get a cattle license, anyway.
And I think that that's true, and I think we should enforce that and make sure that.
But I don't think anybody in Struthers has a cattle license, so.
Well, then that's something that needs to be enforced, but adding rules and regulations.
Exactly.
But then, even if we fall into how many, how many pets they have, if we enforce that.
Sure.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is, we're not doing that, we're not enforcing a cattle license, we're adding another set of rules for somebody to abide by, when basically if you had over five, you, you had to have a cattle license, you were in the wrong to be in.
And the facilities to keep that many dogs.
For sure, but I don't.
But how many people, like, I, I had an apartment, a two-bedroom apartment with six pit bulls in it. That's way, and he had, and he took them out to the parking lot to do their business, and people were afraid to go outside their house.
That's in your ward? See, I, I haven't had any dealings with anything like that.
I don't think he lives there anymore, but he, and, and they, and the apartment was demolished inside.
Oh, and again, I, I guess my, my thing is, I feel like we're, we're targeting a broad spectrum of people
Sure.
to deal with something that isn't certain, isn't in all certainty combated with what we're putting on the books.
And I will say, Camel does have an ordinance in place that they don't allow more than four pets, so I can reach out to them and see how.
How, has it worked, has it done anything?
If it was there, yeah, and we can go off of that, too.
I would just hate to take something away from, I mean, there's such a difference, the things we spoke on last week were, um, you know, feces in the yard, things like that, well, you tell me, Bob, if you got five Chihuahuas and Jim got a Rottweiler, who got more feces in there? I would, I would probably disagree.
Can I interject something on that?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Well, first of all, let's not forget, at, at least the way that it was asked for, to be presented to council, I believe this also includes cats as well.
Okay.
All right, that's first point, second point, I think, and I'm not, I'll have to go back and take a look at it, but I think that it's six or more dogs, you know, under the Ohio Revised Code, under the cattle. And, and there's also other, um, criteria there, for example, I do believe that there is a criteria, you have to have six or more dogs that you are selling, uh, that you're selling as part of a retail business or something like that. So it's not just, I don't think it's just the number of dogs and you have to get a cattle, unless it's, you're, you're talking about, I don't think we have an ordinance for it, to be honest with my knowledge. Um, so I think under the revised code.
We do?
We do have the.
I think we do, yeah.
Okay.
We have a cattle ordinance.
Yeah.
Um, but I think it's six dogs, and again, I think there's a little bit more to it than just having six dogs.
Okay.
They would have to be established as a business, basically.
Yeah.
I guess my thing is, I, I really feel like here, and it's our duty to kind of go over this, I feel like there's probably a happy medium and somewhere to meet that is best for everybody, rather than just saying, listen, you can't have more than five, people have bigger locks than other people, we have to take a lot of, of broad things into consideration here. So, in your instance, where you're saying you got a two-bedroom apartment with six dogs in it, I would agree that's too much. But I would also say to this guy over here who has an acre of property and a fenced-in yard, it's not too much.
Yeah.
So by putting down this broad spectrum that nobody could have more than that, I feel like is probably not the best idea, and we should probably discuss just a better avenue to combat the problems we're having.
But even, even, we have an ordinance for vicious dogs, and pit bulls is namely named as a vicious dog in our ordinance.
Yes.
Has to be in a cage with a roof on it.
Right.
And they have to have a hundred thousand dollars.
And, and that. Insurance.
Insurance policy.
And I don't know of anybody that does that.
Well, I mean, at the same time, that needs to be enforced.
Sure.
And, and again, are we just putting more on the books that maybe isn't gonna get enforced? Because it, it seems like what you're saying is, with the pit bulls, we have an ordinance, but it's not getting enforced.
Right.
So, we've done our job, or council has done what it can do in putting that ordinance in effect, it still has to be enforced, you know what I mean? Mike?
Yells may interject.
Absolutely.
Uh, I brought this up last week, I had a friend of mine who lives on Overlook, and he had a house in back, and the neighbors were, uh, having ten, twelve cats, they would leave the back door open, the cats would go around the neighborhood, and it wore a path in the backyards. They were chewing the neighbors' flowers, they were in the garden, they were doing their business on the other people's property, and to have six, ten cats.
I, 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 I get it, a hundred percent.
It's not controlled, and what kind of quality of life is an animal gonna have if they're cooped up in a house with all these?
I don't even think we require a license for cats here.
Apparently, though, those cats weren't cooped up in a house.
No, no, no. No, they weren't.
They were in the backyard, they were the neighborhood, so.
They were in the backyard. But they wore, they wore a path through the yard.
Yeah. I, I get it, if, if they're not controlled and they're not being taken care of, then obviously they're gonna be a nuisance.
And if they weren't at that house, they'd be thorough cats anyway, running all over the place anyway.
Right. Uh.
Then we'd have a lot of that.
Well, they tried talking to the neighbor, and there was all kinds of excuses why they left the back door open and these cats can go in and out. Uh, I just keep some of this stuff in mind when, and then in the summertime, when the windows are open, people sitting outside, it's one o'clock in the morning, you got a house that's got several dogs, and they're all barking at the same time.
I, I, I would agree.
You know, keep that in mind also.
But again, we also have to think about the guy who has several dogs, and none of them are barking.
Hey, you, you're right.
So, I, I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm saying we should probably look into this a little bit more before just saying.
Right.
Everybody, no matter how good you take care of them, you can't have more than this, because that's a lot different than the guy who has one, but it's a nuisance to everybody in the neighborhood, is, it smells terrible, I mean, I just, I get it, if you got six, there's way more to keep up on, sure, but why are we gonna penalize the guy who does keep up on that? So, it, it, all I'm asking for is a little bit of discussion, if we could maybe find some common ground here, I don't know that just enforcing the, the, you can't have more than five, I just don't know that that's the answer, and I solution that we're looking for either.
As far as the barking goes, in order for a case department to enforce it, they have to hear the dogs barking.
I understand.
Most of the time when they get there, they're done barking.
Right.
Or the camel knows that they're coming.
Again, a nuisance for barking, that could be done with one dog, just as much as it could be done with six, we know that.
Sure, oh, yeah, absolutely.
We've got how many calls about one dog barking, not a pack of dogs, you know, so, a-again, I'm not saying that I'm a hundred percent against something, 'cause I'm not, I, I just really feel like we should dig into this a little bit more before we, we actually make an ordinance and put it on the books.
Yep.
Megan Pingley, uh, did you say Camel has an ordinance?
Yeah, they have, they have four dogs.
If I, if you know what, if I could, um, I think it's less about penalizing the owner, it's more about protecting the dog and protecting the animal, is that,
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
That's where we were more or less coming from when we met with animal charities, um, the, the whole reason for bringing this to council was to have a genuine conversation to see what we can do and what we can put in place in conjunction with animal charities and kind of be on the same page, so we can have something that's enforceable. Some of the ordinance that, that we were presented, we ran them by, um, some of our officers and our chiefs, and they're so vague that they're not really enforceable, there's so much gray area, it's not necessarily something that our, our department feels is maybe a good, um, avenue. The camel ordinance, which we did speak to, um, Mitch Zupko from Camel about, they do enforce this, and they have, they have, um, some good feedback, but their ordinance states, number of dogs or cats limited, no person shall harbor or keep in or upon a residential property more than four dogs or four cats at any one time, except a duly licensed veterinarian or animal hospital. This section shall not be construed to apply to those situations where a female dog or female cat gives birth to a litter of young. In such an event, the, the owner, harbinger, or keeper shall be given reasonable time, not to exceed six months, and which should dispose of a sufficient number of the young as to bring the total number of animal harbored. Animals harbored are kept to the prescribed maximum. So that's their exact ordinance, that's something they do, now, four might not be something that, that, but this is why we've, this is what administration wants to have this open relationship with council to say, this is something that, that we're seeing, we're working out with them, let's have, let's bring this to the table and have a genuine discussion about it, so we can have something that fits Struthers, that fits our town.
Sure.
With animal charities.
I guess my point of all of this is, you, you said it best, at the beginning of your statement, you said that you think that it's more about combating the mistreatment and the living conditions of these animals. I just wanna be sure that what we're putting down.
Does that.
Is actually gonna do that, and, you know, the lady who has five dogs takes care of all of them, and they're not a nuisance to anybody, I, I don't wanna be a hindrance to her.
But I thought this was to give us teeth, that's the whole thing, so the person with five dogs with no problem, isn't gonna get the call, isn't gonna have a problem, right?
You know?
So. Right. Unless their neighbor calls and complains about it, because they got a beef with them, and then.
Cause they're upset. Well, and, and not only that, though, is that what we're doing now, Lori, so we're making laws to give us more teeth
Well, that's true.
that affect everybody when we're trying to just target one, one set of people?
No, but I'm just thinking, we need, we need to have teeth somehow to.
So that. I agree, but I don't know that.
To control that.
These are the teeth that we're looking for, I, I agree with you guys, a hundred percent, we need to make something, we need to construct an ordinance
Situations, absolutely.
and make some legislation about this, but what.
Cause it's gonna be hard to make leg, in my opinion, it's gonna be hard to make legislation saying that, um, they're being mistreated, that it's dirty, that it's, cause who's, who gives you the right to say that the house is dirty, or who gives you the right to say that? So, in the ordinances, we would need a cut and dry.
Sure.
You can't, you can't go by, oh, you know, that's bad, you can't live like that, well, that doesn't necessarily mean it's bad, I mean, it.
Well, there is, I mean, the Humane Society for, for a lot of those things, correct, that's who you would call in if they were substandard living conditions?
Right.
You, you know, so, a-again, I'm not, I'm not wholeheartedly disagreeing with you, I'm just saying that I think before we.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure I'm for numbers either, like, in children, but.
I, I, before we set this in stone, I think this needs to be.
Right.
A conversation ongoing more than just this week, really ponder on this and think where we can go with this, and we need to.
And maybe talk to the police and say, like, what, what kind of teeth could you use, like, what, what could we help you with in, in getting this?
And look at other. Sure. Yeah, I mean, I.
Like, what would give you?
I, I think we're all in agreeance on that, I mean, my, my only thing is, before I put another ordinance on the books, I wanna know that it's targeting what we're putting it on there to target, I don't wanna put something on there that.
That's another walk around.
Yeah, yeah, I really don't, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think all our ordinance target things, it's just a matter of being forced.
Well, but not only that, but.
There's a lot of gray area.
There, there is.
A lot of our.
On this, yeah, I agree.
Well, I mean, if, if the goal is to, you know, you know, we're concerned about treatment of, you know, cats and dogs, you know, it's putting a limit on the number that a person can have, is that, is that gonna accomplish what we're trying to achieve?
And is that what we're trying to do, Jimmy?
Well, that's.
Another.
We're trying to combat mistreatment, so let's combat mistreatment, let's not put a number on the amount of pets that you could actually have.
Exactly. Right.
Let's target the mistreatment of them, right? So, I, I guess that's more my point.
That's not even, the animals, it could be kids living in the house.
Because you can. Well, then, that's Child Protective Services, then, not our, it's not something.
So let's, you know. Yeah, you're right.
Want to limit the number of kids?
Yeah. China? But no, I mean, we need to go after what we need to go after, and again, I don't believe right now, you're saying there's nothing on the books with teeth, this isn't the, this isn't the teeth that is now gonna solve all of our problems.
So, we have, and we have to get a definition of what mistreatment is, then, and then we could probably go down.
No, I think that was the idea of.
Wow.
I think this is gonna also open a can of worms with leash law and with dogs attacking people and things like that.
Which we don't at this point, but number isn't going to hinder any of those.
No, not going, not going to, but I'm just saying, it's, this is going to be a domino effect of what we really need to look into.
Which is good.
It's great.
I think our leash law is pretty good, actually.
Yes.
And, and the fact that you can't leave a dog on a porch without being an attendant for more than an hour.
Yeah.
You, you know, and there again, you know, enforceability, are, are, is that being enforced, and you know, are we just gonna put something else on the books that is just?
We show up, yeah, exactly. Yes, that is.
I guess what we probably should do is get all of our dog ordinances and all of the states. Go over them and craft something and go over camels, and go over, where is this from?
And we need a full definition of abuse and mistreatment.
Yes, and we need to sit down and, and actually craft this legislation, not just a quick fix with saying, this is gonna solve it, you can't have X amount of animals, that's, to me, that's not combating what we're trying to target, which is the mistreatment, which is the poor living conditions, you know, that's my opinion.
Yeah, and, and I think it's a matter of, you know, the, the, the Humane Society, I mean, you know, that's, that's what they deal with, you know, is, is the treatment of, of, of pets, you know, so what is it that we could do that would, that would work in, in combination with that?
I agree, Lori, you, you brought up a good point, you said that who are we to tell somebody the living conditions in their house, right? Who are we to tell them how many animals they could have if they're taking care of them and if those animals are cared for?
I, I mean, I agree with you, I'm not saying I, I'm an artist myself, I agree with you, I just think we need to,
No, I understand.
i- if we want to enforce something, I think we need to get with the police, with, what, what do they need, what is their problem, like, you know, what, or do we call the Humane Society, what, what do we do? There are, and, and I watched, on the corner of my street, I watched a pit bull almost attack a young girl, and it was bad, you know?
For, I'm sorry, for the record, I, I'm just getting a little bit off, but it is our responsibility to monitor the, or to be concerned about the interior of someone's house, I mean, put it orders, I mean.
Yeah.
That, that, there are situations that, I'm not saying it is a common situation at all, I'm just, it is our police power, it's our responsibility, uh, to make sure that the interior living conditions are in fact habitable.
Yeah, habitable, but we're not there to bestow some type of judgment of what we think is suitable, it's, it's more of a safety issue.
Well, how about?
Well, it gets to a point where we are telling them, this isn't suitable.
I understand. I, I, I understand, but I'm not there to go in there and tell you I don't like the color here.
Well, that's, that's.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's all it is.
But it's the number of dogs, it's like, you know, for me, more than one dog is too many dogs, but that's me, you know?
For sure.
You know, for some people, it's like.
I love dogs.
Twenty dogs isn't enough.
Yeah, I love dogs, I don't have any pets, I'm, I'm cool with that, I have enough responsibility, but I'm not gonna tell somebody else how many they could have if they're gonna take care of them and give a good home to those animals.
So, basically, our, our, our cattle ordinance would take care of the limit of dogs.
Right, all we did was shape.
But it has to be specific.
Yeah, all we did was shape. Unless they have a business, is doing, as such.
We shaped.
Well, no, I, again, I think, the Ohio Revised Code, the way I recall it, and it's been years since I looked at it, um, is that it was six dogs, and then you also had to show that it was being, that the dogs were being sold for a profit.
I'll be ready.
And that, so it's not just six dogs and you're a cattle.
But don't they have to have the facilities for six dogs as well, like runs and, and kennels and stuff like that?
I don't know, that I'd have to go back and look.
License?
I don't, I don't know what.
These.
If they're a cattle, yeah, they would.
These are all things we need to take a look at prior to making an ordinance.
Oh, I agree.
So, you know.
And again, so everybody understands, as with all ordinances that are presented to council at the first time, this is a jumping off point to get the conversation, this, no ordinance that is ever presented to council for the first time is ever intended to be a final draft or a final.
Nor should it be, that's the point of seven of us being.
I agree, I agree a hundred percent.
Most, most of our ordinances weren't developed by law-abiding citizens, they were always done by the people that abused it, and it's only a few. And, and the whole city has to abide by what a few have done.
And there's a lot of laws out there like that.
Exactly, so I mean, you know, you gotta take that into consideration, you know, a few bad apples can ruin a whole bushel.
Sure, sure, I, I guess what I'm saying tonight is, we need to take a look at a lot more things.
Oh, absolutely.
Prior to putting something in stone.
Well, this is a start.
Sure, and it's a good start.
Definitely.
Sure.
If I could.
Yes.
Um, we have, we have Jess and Jane here from Animal Charities, and then we have them on the agenda, so if you wanted to.
Yeah.
Have them explain where this.
You guys wanna stand out, introduce yourself and where you're from?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm Jane, I'm the operations director of Animal Charity, we are the Humane Society, um, and this is.
Jessica, I'm the humane agent from Honey County, I'm employed by Animal Charity.
Thank you both for coming.
Thanks, Jen.
You guys wanna speak on any of this, your thoughts?
Um, we're here to really answer any questions, like, that you guys, like, there's a lot of questions that are happening, a lot of your questions that you have been saying, a lot of those things are covered already under the Ohio Revised Code, that is what the Humane Society deals with, and a lot of the ordinances that you have questions on, um, some of those things are covered by the dog warden and the county. So, a lot of the questions that you guys, you know, have, who would enforce this, things like that, that are already set in stone under the Ohio Revised Code, um, and then if you have specific questions, Jess will be able to better answer those ones for you, but just so you're kind of aware of why we were here, just to answer some questions about, could this happen or is this already in place and?
Does the Ohio Revised Code have anything in it that just, just prohibits the number of dogs within a household?
No, not.
Just that by itself?
No, not in the Ohio, no.
There's more to it.
Correct, yeah, correct.
Well, and truly, though, there's probably more to it for a reason, same thing, we're having this discussion here right now, because putting a generalized just number to it doesn't do justice for the people who actually take care of theirs, would you agree with that?
I don't know without going back and looking at what those other condition, or elements and factors are.
Based. Based off of, um, what you said, like, who are we to say, right, as, well, that's why you have the humane agent, she is to say what is considered abuse and neglect, and that's her whole job, is to investigate those crimes, so those things are already in place.
So there's. In conjunction with the vets sometimes, or?
In court, we will bring the experienced, you know, vet and for the cases and things like that, but it is her job to go on scene to determine and to investigate those.
But, but she has mechanisms in place.
Do we have the citizens, when we get a complaint about something, do we have the citizens to call her?
The Ohio Revised. Correct, and then that's when we do.
So that washes our hands of it.
Correct.
But, but the Humane Society only enforces the animal cruelty laws of the Ohio Revised Code, we cannot enforce city ordinances or, or local laws.
Well, for instance, if, if we were called to a house, and we discovered that it's a hoarder, and they have pets, so we would call you.
To come in and investigate, yes.
Okay, so as, as far as trying to address what we're talking about, and that is the mistreatment of, of pets, what is it that any city could do as far as putting an ordinance into place that, that you look at as, as something that would be, something that you would suggest?
The, the biggest thing that I would suggest is tightening the adequate shelter laws, um, there is just a basic shelter law in the Ohio Revised Code, um, there's stronger laws that really explain adequate shelter, uh, extreme weather conditions for animals to be outside, uh, as well as tightening up the tethering, um, because there are. Um, because there are, there are new ways to look at the tethering ordinance. That is what I feel will make it, it it's more of an educational way to get through to the people on how to care for the animals. Uh, a lot of my job is education, but, I mean, sixty percent, I'd say my job is going and educating animal owners so that they know how to properly take care of them, I don't think that a limit is going to.
So, you you don't look at putting a limit on the number of pets as being answered as a solution, okay?
I don't, I don't think that that's gonna change that.
So that we can squelch that.
Well, I mean, I.
But I I think, I if, I might, I have to look at, but I thought we tightened up our tethering law a few years ago, whereas they weren't allowed to be out on a leash for only a certain number of hours.
I thought when we dealt with it, we ended up going back to Ohio Revised Code, cause I thought there was something in there that was basically along the same lines of what we were discussing, and I I'm pretty, I know we discussed it, but.
They can't be tethered in the front yard.
Yes.
And things like that, so, I think we we tightened up on that quite a bit, so.
We can enforce that, too.
I mean, truly, I, and again, I I I agree with you wholeheartedly on the number, I would never have six dogs. I would never in my life have that amount, but, I'm still not gonna take somebody else's ability away to have those. If they're willing to provide for them, adequate shelter, food, who who are we to take that away? If they're being cared for and if living conditions are up to standard.
And if they're not.
That's the one, that's.
Then have other, that's.
That's why the Humane Society is is in place.
That's when you come in, right?
But the, yeah, and it's all about the enforcement, too, um, you know, if if you guys have ordinance in place and and they work for your city already, then you just have to make sure that the enforcement within your city is happening, you know, um, there are, there are so many different things, like you have bites and you have leash laws, and that falls under your ordinances, but that also falls under the county ordinances, so, just using all of your resources, I think, a little bit better might, of what you have in place, and you know, if zoning deems a place unlivable um for humans, and there's animals living there and they call us, that's where, you know, we already have those laws in place where she can go and investigate those crimes separately from what a human, you know, but like she said, those specific things that you have in place, like your tethering and your shelter, to tighten those up, maybe get a little bit more in detail, and make sure that your law enforcement knows how and when to utilize the resources that are in place with the pound to end with. And we, if I, if I may, we have um Officer Schneeman who used to work for the Humane Society, um, and so he's very familiar with the laws,
Hmm.
and I can tell you who protects those animals, you know, call, as soon as he sees an animal in distress, he's calling. Um, so, our officers will do a good job when they're presented with
The situation.
any type of situation, um, and again, I just wanna, this was just brought about to have a conversation, and that's what we met with them, and we said, what can we do on our end, are there things we can do? And Joey was there, and we, this was something that got brought up, so again, this wasn't, even on our end, wasn't something that we said, this is what we're doing, this is what we wanna do, here's a, this was genuinely a discussion to have with with animal charities and with all of us together to try to come up with something or tighten or figure out what we can do to to make it.
Those.
That specific, that specific thing of limit and number of animals, I will tell you that almost, pretty much every city has one, you know, so that's not uncommon, do we think it fits for Struthers? Probably not, um, because of your size, but, um, it's not uncommon. So, like Youngstown has one, Camel has one, most cities have a limit because it's a city, you know, and and there are different types of, you can't just, you can't cater to the people that do treat their animals well, or the people that live in houses that are larger than others, or people that live in lots that are larger than others, um.
It's not a one-size-fits-all.
Right, but in some cities, you know, based off of their housing and and everything, it could be, but not, maybe not for Struthers.
Yeah, cause honestly, like, you you tell people can't have chickens, who are you to say that we can't?
Well, that that's farm animal, we have.
Farm animals.
Well, who are you to say that a chicken is a farm animal, cause I could pet a chicken and I can live in my house.
Yeah.
I I I think that that would be deemed a farm animal, and we've had an ordinance on the books that you can't have farm animals now, since for a long time.
Well.
But I'm just saying, so you're still, there still are things that we do say when you live in a city, correct?
You live in a city, I I I agree, and wholeheartedly, but I think I'm probably gonna draw the line at trying to combat
So.
a abuse problem by limiting a number of animals, because I don't.
I don't know that it's so much even abuse, I think it's, like, how would you like to live next door to a neighbor that doesn't clean up their backyard?
Well, but listen, you're putting laws on that already have laws to combat that, if you got a neighbor that don't clean up his backyard,
How do you enforce that?
then cite him for not cleaning up his backyard, don't cite him for the amount of animals he's gonna have, we go over this all the time. You guys wanna put laws in place to do something that we already have a law in place to combat? If there's feces all over the backyard, then he's gonna get cited for that, whether he got one dog or ten.
But but also, the person that has more than four dogs and gets called on is because the dogs are a problem.
Sure.
The people that have five dogs that don't, that don't cause any problem, they're not gonna be called upon.
And and until exactly what Jim said, your neighbor don't like you, we don't wanna, do we really wanna operate law in that in that manner?
Until. But then, yeah, we can't make everybody happy, either.
I I understand that, but do we really wanna, do we really wanna make law in that manner? You know, if you're you're saying that this guy's backyard is messed up and you live next to him because he got four dogs, then cite him on the backyard being messed up, there's stuff to cite that, every, every instance that somebody has stated, there's another ordinance that combats that.
So, okay, okay, the guy's backyard is a mess and he keeps his dogs back there, so then that would be abuse to the dogs.
Then 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 that's who you would call, correct? That would be your, your realm.
Well, I mean, you can't differentiate those things, I mean, if if people are keeping their house like trash, I'm sure they're not taking care of their pets, either.
And it's all about educating the public, too, on how, where, and when to report. If you suspect that somebody's house is implorable with animal feces, or if you suspect that an animal is living outdoors without proper shelter, then, you know, it's really important to educate your city on, you know, when to call and who to call.
But again, you would, you would be the judge of that, correct?
Correct. Correct.
On the condition, yeah.
Correct.
Okay, so, just curious, if I recall.
So, why would we police that, that's your jurisdiction, we would call you, you already deal with that, correct?
If. When it pertains to conditions and the welfare of an animal, yeah, that's, that's covered in.
Yes. So, again, we already have mechanism in place, they handle that, right?
That's, that's covered by the, the state laws.
We still need to tighten up what we have, that's not.
Agree, I agree, but putting it, putting how many you could have in there doesn't.
No, I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying, we still need to look at what we have and look into, like you said, who is registered with a pit bull, who has a kennel license, things like that, that we're not following.
There's a lot of animal shelter, um, animal shelters out there, and there's a lot, she can go into detail, a lot of like the temperature, um, how how cold is too cold, it doesn't spate that in your ordinance, how hot is too hot? Um, so those are things that she can answer, um, and give you more references on, um, but those parts of the ordinances that you have in place would be, I think, a good place to start.
Are you aware of any, sorry, go ahead, you're meeting, go ahead.
Cincinnati. Right. Do you have like an ordinance that you favor that you, a city has that you favor with that has?
I, I do.
That's exactly what I was gonna ask.
Okay. I do, Cincinnati.
Cincinnati?
Cincinnati, okay.
Both their uh, extreme weather conditions, shelter, and their tethering.
Okay.
We know how Revised Code has those as well?
That, those are ordinances in the city of Cincinnati, the Ohio Revised Code.
Do they have like the temperature ranges?
In Cincinnati, yes.
But not in Ohio Revised Code?
No, it, it's, that's where it it's a little different.
So, it's gonna be judgmental on who, who, who.
Yeah, cause the, Ohio Revised Code is through water shelter, but there's not specifics on shelters, and that's where, when the cities
Okay.
Okay.
We.
makes stronger ordinance for the shelters to better protect the animals that are outside.
Okay.
Hey, Megan, can we give off the Cincinnati's ordinance when you get done, so we can review?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll look it up online.
I was just gonna say, you have a copy of it, don't you?
I have it right here.
There we go.
She has it right here.
We think cautionary warnings, maybe?
Run that thing off.
No, I forgot for you guys.
As this evening was going.
Yes, so.
Mister Johnson.
The tethering one and extreme weather.
Did try.
We did try a cautionary, I know.
Yeah, so, I'm gonna ask everybody, Mister Johnson is here to speak, and he did try to contact Mike
Yes.
to be be put on the agenda this evening, so I'm gonna go around the table real quick, and if it's okay with everybody, just allow.
If you're the chair, you can make the call, it's your committee.
Well, then, you could speak, but is that, is it all right, everybody?
That's fine with me, I'd like to hear what he has to say.
I, you know.
Okay, I gotta. First, uh, to answer the question, Mahoney County kennel law is five dogs, and if they're, they're unspayed or unneutered. If they're spayed or neutered, you can't get kennel license in Mahoney County, and.
That's Mahoney County?
At Mahoney County, so, and um, in the past, I have had six dogs. I've had six rescue Maltese that have had gr- regular grooming appointments, vet appointments, they were well taken care of, fenced, jarred. Most of my neighbors probably didn't even know I had those dogs, so there's a big difference.
It's not the number.
It's not the number.
It's the guy taking care of it.
Right. Again, um, I'm completely against the the pet legislation, it's ineffective, the AKC, the CFA, and the ASPCA
You can make a.
all oppose pet limits and offer suggestions for more effective measures of us. And while the recent cases and neglect were horrific, pet limits would not have prevented them. Uh, individuals do not care about the laws, and it wouldn't make any difference whether there was a law in place or not, they would, their houses would still be a mess, the dogs would still be.
And it would only hurt people like you who have the dogs and take care of them, because there's other laws to combat if you don't take care of them.
Right. Right. Right, uh, the American, the the Animal Law Coalition rejects pet limits, and they say, um, pet limits really do not have anything to do with nuisances such as dogs running loose, barking too much, or defecating in public places or private gardens and gardens. A household with two dogs who bark or howl and chase passing cars may present a nuisance, while the owner of four or five dogs generally kept inside and not bothering neighbors at all, and it makes sense to concentrate animal control resources on those animals who present the nuisance. And um, pet limits are not a solution to hoarding, you need hoarding laws to deal with that. And um, too often municipalities quickly set a pet limit as a way to say, look, we did something, when in effect, you've accomplished nothing that's gonna be effective. Uh, I sent council a number of articles, I don't know if you got them all, you know, read through them, but there's some really good ones there about drafting ordinances and stuff. And no one wants to see animals abused, children living in squalor, or to be forced indoors because of dogs running loose. And what the city needs is strong animal control regulations and enforcements, not limits to um, to hurt responsible pet owners.
Thank you, appreciate your humble apologies. Anybody have any questions for Mister Johnson?
I, I just wanna commend you for doing research and looking these things up and approaching us and handling this the way you have, even.
Thank you.
But just so you know as well, it wasn't anything we were ever set in stone about, so, we.
Well, I know the last meeting, only part of it showed up online.
Yes.
We're working on that, right?
Someone just said it went down now, it was, the, the live feed go down.
It, we're working.
It's still saying live, but.
And all we saw were numbers.
Yes.
You know, talking about these numbers and not the meat of the problem.
Yes.
Exactly, you know, and what what is it, are we, that we're trying to accomplish?
Right, I mean, there was ju- there was just a pit bull attack over the weekend on my street. Now, I don't.
Which which street is that?
Smithfield.
Smithfield, okay.
Now, I don't know if it was one dog, two dogs, I'm not sure, you know, which house or how many dogs they have, I doubt they have more than the limit you're probably talking about, but, you know, the question is, were the do, uh, you know, how are the dogs taken care of? Are they licensed, have they been vetted, uh, do people have fences, you know, those are all ordinances you can control.
Well, we only, we could be talking about one dog.
Right.
This attack could have been just one dog, but, you have multiple, which has no bearing on these things, right, you know?
Right. Right, right.
Well, we have ordinances for pit bulls, right?
Yeah, we do.
I mean, so, like, even if that happened at my house, it was a pit bull, and like, it was bad, so, I mean, there are things that like,
Yeah.
those things need to be enforced.
Agree, I agree, and.
You can't do that.
I also agree that we really do need to go over this, take on all the information and go over it, again, once I thought about it over the week, I just wasn't a,
I do, I do.
I wasn't for putting a number on it, I just didn't think that that was a solution, but, it's not that I'm not for
Yeah, I think.
going over this, redoing the ordinance, doing whatever is best, and 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 doing that, it's just.
And maybe making people in the community aware of what is in place, or what we do have, or what they can do, like, it's it's again, it's like she said, educating people.
Yeah.
So, here, Megan actually had a really good idea, and I don't know if it's something that you guys do or not, but is there any way that you guys have some kind of animal education class that we can maybe post on our Facebook Live or something? We could always work something out, yeah, we go to schools and we speak, we go to businesses, we have businesses come in, we have people come in, and and that's something we'd be absolutely happy to do.
That'd be great, a great idea, Megan.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, anybody else have anything for this discussion or anything else for finance and legislation? Anonymous call for adjournment, everybody, you know, do some due diligence, think about it over the week, and we'll bring it back um, in two weeks for caucus. Good?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Meeting adjourned.